Evening, everybody, and welcome to the zoning board of appeals for the village of Tuckahoe for Wednesday, June the 8th, 2022.
Recording in progress.
Okay. Okay, let's start with the pledge of allegiance, please.
Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which we stand, where we should, under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Nancy, please take the roll.
Yes. Member Fiore.
Present.
Member Brown.
Present.
Member Rinaldi.
Present.
And Chairman Ringwald.
I am present. First order of business, we will approve the minutes of the May 11th meeting. Does anybody have any questions, additions?
No.
Nope.
Done. Will somebody make a motion to approve them?
Make a motion.
Second it?
Second.
Okay, those that were here, will you please, I guess for this one, Nancy poll them?
Member Fiore.
In favor.
Member Brown.
Approve.
Member Rinaldi.
In favor.
And Chairman Ringwald.
I was absent, so abstained.
Three to zero.
Okay, 377 Marvell Road is adjourned, three, I'm sorry, 235 Alpine Place area variance for an addition. I see you're here. If you would please step to the mic, state your name and address for the record, please.
Jonathan Graves, representing 235 Alpine, the architect.
Right.
And I think I'm here, just y'all had already reviewed this one past time.
Yeah. Any changes?
No changes, not yet. Nope.
No additions or anything? Everything's the same?
There will be an addition.
I'm sorry. Additions to the original proposal.
I think at the last thing we're supposed to put a pump in, a sump pump.
Well, I don't know any pumps. I'm just doing the addition of the building itself. The pump, I might have been with the plumbing issue that they had on the street.
All right. Because I thought it was part of it. Hmm?
Is Bill, or Mike, on?
Yes. Do you have the link? Bill, Mike?
Yeah.
Is he aware of the pump that's needed?
Bill, just confirming, Tom would like to confirm that you are aware about the pump that is needed.
Dry well.
Dry well?
Can you hear what they're saying?
Can you confirm that you're aware that they need a pump and a dry well?
Dry well.
Can you hear?
Can you hear?
Who's my? No, Carolene, I can't hear.
All right, I'm calling you from my phone.
Is the understanding of that is because of the addition?
Yeah.
Or because of the?
I think it was close to the street.
It wasn't a, was it a dry well?
No, yeah, it's a dry well. I actually think, yeah, it does get a little bit closer to the street, but it's an existing non-conformity. I don't know if that's what necessitated.
Is that not based on a percentage of?
Yeah, because we asked Bill, and he said yes.
I think Bill said he would follow up on it.
Yeah.
So Gary, we can make it a condition of the approval if it's needed?
Yeah, that they satisfy the building department if a dry well's needed.
All right.
Okay.
Fair enough.
I can check if there is one already, if you mind.
Yeah.
Our chairman, Tom Ringwald, is asking if you are aware about the pump that is required for this project.
The dry well.
Or the dry well.
Dry well?
The dry well.
Nope. Okay.
Good. Thank you.
That's it.
What did he say? I'm sorry.
He said, yes, we reviewed all the drawings, they have no problem with it.
No problem.
So it must be included.
Thank you very much.
You're good.
All right. Thank you. You can have a seat. You have to wait for the approval.
Yeah. Don't go nowhere.
Don't run away. You can have a seat, though.
Okay.
So the public hearing is still open regarding 235 Alpine Place. Is there anyone from the public who would like to comment? Anyone on Zoom?
Nobody, also.
I will then make a motion to close the public hearing. Do I have hearing? Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. I will read the proposal. Village of Tuckahoe area variance resolution, the application for area variance requested by George Santiago, whose address is 235 Alpine Place, Tuckahoe, New York. Section 43, block 7, lot 1.3, for relief from the following sections of the zoning code, 5-1 dot 6 dot 3, increasing a non-conformity. Secra resolution, based on this application as submitted, this zoning board of appeals finds and determines that, one, the action taken herein is an unlisted action subject to the requirements of Secra and its implementing regulations. Two, this zoning board of appeals is in possession of all information reasonably necessary to make the determination as to the environmental significance of the proposed area variance application. Three, that the action taken herein shall not have a significant adverse impact on the environment, and it is declared that a negative declaration is hereby adopted with regard to the action. Do I have a second?
Second.
Nancy, please poll the board.
Member Fiore.
In favor.
Member Brown.
In favor.
Member Rinaldi.
In favor.
And Chairman Ringwald.
In favor. Applicant resides at 235 Alpine Place in Tuckahoe. Applicant is seeking to add a one-and-a-half-story new addition to an existing single-family dwelling. The addition will house an extended kitchen, breakfast area, and mudroom. The house is an existing non-conforming home, and the applicant is seeking to increase the non-conformity. The applicant will not encroach further into the setback, but will build higher than what exists there presently, thus the necessity for the variance. We have heard the applicant at several work sessions and public hearings and find the requested variance will have little to no impact on the surrounding properties. Therefore, recommendation is for the area variance to be granted as the benefit to the applicant of the area variance outweigh the detriment to health, safety, and the welfare of the neighborhood. The applicant has demonstrated through its submissions and presentations that it has met all aspects of the five-prong test to the satisfaction of this board. The granting of the variances herein is granted on the condition that work under such variance be commenced and diligently prosecuted within one year of the granting thereof, failing which such variances shall become null and void. Do I have a second?
Second.
Nancy, please poll the board.
Member Fiore.
In favor.
Member Brown.
In favor.
Member Rinaldi.
In favor.
And Chairman Ringwald.
In favor. That's it. Congratulations.
Good luck.
It will look good, I know. Thank you. Okay. And our final agenda item is 31-33 Main Street, seeking a special permit for a new dance studio. Please state your name and address for the record.
Good evening, Kathy Zalantis from Silverburg Zalantis LLC, 120 White Plains Avenue in Tarrytown, New York. We represent the applicant, M A G J Realty LLC, which is seeking both a special permit and an area variance for this board for a dance studio called Dreammakers Performing Art. So with me tonight is the project architect, Robert Stanzel-Zahl, and also Lisa Ribaki of Dreammakers, and her husband is here today, too, for support. So just, I know that you're very familiar with the location of the building, but just for the public's sake, the building is located at the corner of Columbus Avenue and Main Street, right across from the train station. This, it's a two-tenant building, commercial spaces. The space on the corner is currently tenanted by the post office, and the other space that's the subject of this application was previously tenanted by Fresco Market, but that tenant left in 2018, and the space has been vacant since. There is actually a parking lot associated with this building. It has a 19-space parking lot, but 17 of those spaces are designated for use by the post office, which leaves two spaces designated for this tenant's use. This tenant proposes to operate only for limited periods of time during the day, from 3:00 PM to 9:00 PM, with the height of the times being from about 5:00 PM to 9:00 PM, which is after children get out of school, because this will serve students, and it ranges from toddlers to teenagers. We provided a detailed letter to the board detailing the basis for the area variance and for the special permit. Initially, this is a type-two action under Secra, thereby not requiring additional review under Secra. I'll just briefly go through the points in our letter. With respect to the special permit, as this board knows, a special permit is a use that the code has determined fits with the district, and in this case, we comply with the codes requirement for a special permit. The use is compatible with the business district. This is a use that's going to bring patrons into the community, so people are going to go, and they'll also go and go to the other businesses and bring traffic and walking traffic into the business district. It's consistent with the comprehensive plan, like with other personal service stores. This is providing a service, in this case, a dance lesson, but it's better than just other types of personal service establishments, because with a dance studio, you can actually regulate the patrons and the timing, and the plan here is to have classes 15 minutes apart, so that students aren't coming and going at the same time. Also, with these types of classes, many of the students take multiple classes, so they'll be there for a longer stretch of period of time than somebody who, for example, is going to a nail salon or a beauty salon. The structure is easily accessible to the fire and police from both the parking lot and from the streets. The structure itself is not going to be altered. There's just interior renovations, and then there's just the ability and the renovation to allow access from the back entrance. There's not going to be any nuisance from this operation. Again, they'll be done at 9:00 PM. This use, the building is, I know, next to the train station, but in any event, the studios will operate simultaneously, so the music from one studio can't be so loud that the other studios can't hear the dance music. So that's, it's almost self-regulates the noise. So if anything, I think this will positively impact the community by bringing values up to a space that's been really vacant and a weight on the community for many years. And we're also before this board for parking variance. Again, we have a 19-space lot, but only two are available for this tenant. It's my understanding, based on discussions with the village attorney tonight, that there could be three spots available for us to obtain from the village with a merchant's permit in the Lake Avenue lot, and we'd be willing to obtain, three to four spots, we'd be willing to obtain permits so that staff could utilize those spots. So there'll be no undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood. There's several commercial and retail spaces in the Main Street and Columbus Avenue communities that don't have off-street parking or enough off-street parking. There's several surrounding metered parking lots, if necessary, for the parents to use, and also, we're proposing, you know, that drop-off area, and in this case, we don't anticipate that many of the parents at all would be actually parking in the lot, because they'll most likely just drop their children off and then pick them up at the end of the dance lesson. There's no feasible alternative that the applicant can pursue other than an area variance, because the property is fully developed, there's no ability to develop other parking in the space, and the code requires 19 spaces, which was really, you know, unable to provide that. It's not feasible, even in this community, where parking is so very limited. And while on paper, while the variance may seem substantial, and I think with this type of use, it works, because the peak hours of this dance operation are not the peak hours of the other tenant's operation. So the post office is most busy in the morning, where this dance studio will be most busy from 5:00 to 9:00, which is after the post office will be closed. So there will be the ability, it's not a formal agreement certainly with the post office, but there will be the agreement, and the post office will, as we understand, allow patrons of the dance studio to park in the lot when it's not being used by the post office. So I think the hours work very well. It certainly works better than the prior tenant, the deli, that somebody had to definitely get out of their car and go into the deli and order a sandwich and then come back to their car. Here, there's the ability, again, for that drop-off option and for the option of parking in the lot when it's not in usage by the post office. The proposed variance will also not have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions. Again, the space was previously occupied as a deli, and a retail use would even require more parking under the code. Again, I mentioned before, for the deli, there's no drop-off option. We already have the no-standing signs in front of Main Street, so we don't envision anybody being able to just pull up there. They're going to be told exactly where they have to drop off their children, and again, no noise impact. This is not a self-created hardship to the extent that we're looking to tenant a vacant space that's been that way, and there's no ability to expand parking on the existing building's footprint, but even if it is a self-created hardship, that's not a basis to deny the area variance. And if I can just, if you have no other questions, I could just have the architect come up and make a brief presentation?
Questions?
Yeah, I do. The hours are 5 to 9, you said?
The hours are 3 to 9.
3 to 9.
But the prime hours of operation, the peak hours, are 5 to 9, but the actual business operation hours would be 3 to 9.
Is that a seven-day week? Is it five days, six days?
So Monday through Friday, 3 to 9, and Saturday, 9:00 AM to 2:00.
And Sunday closed?
Sunday closed. And also, I just forgot to mention for the record that no recitals will be held on-site or any gatherings. That's all done off-site.
Just for the public, could you just clarify why, you know, there's, we can't get a formal agreement about using these spaces, or why you cannot get a formal agreement to use the spaces when the post office is closed?
The post office, the federal government won't give us that agreement.
So who polices this parking lot? If somebody else is in your two spots, who takes care of that? You or them?
Well, if it's, you mean, if a third party comes in and uses the spots that are not authorized? I mean, it would be up to the owner. The owner is still going to be the landlord to tow those vehicles that are parked there unlawfully.
All right. So Saturday, the post office is open, correct?
Yeah.
Yes.
So it's pretty busy Saturday morning in the post office, I know.
The reason nobody uses the parking lot is there's not enough parking for the post office, never mind the post office employees. Being federal property, they wouldn't be allowed to park on it anyway.
Yeah, I mean, that's a true statement, but I've lived here 40 years, and I see people in that lot all the time, so I don't know who polices it. It's not our local police.
Is this space is going to be marked as a parking for the dance studio?
Yes.
All right. I don't have any other questions. Anybody else?
No.
All right.
Is there a way to arrange, just as part of the tenancy with the landowner, a method so that you can kind of enforce your parking spots directly without having to get the landlord to intervene every time, like a pre-existing arrangement with a towing company or something like that, just to ensure that you have the access to the two spots in that lot?
I mean, I'm sure we could set something up if it becomes a problem for the tenant to also call the tow company, but I'm sure that the tenant doesn't want to incur the costs of that towing, and it's something really that the landlord would have to pay for. But look, if it becomes a problem, I'm sure the landlord would allow the tenant to just tow, because they're going to be there and notice the unauthorized parking more than the landlord.
Right. So I do have another question. The access ramp. So the idea is that people would come in into this parking lot, drop, you know, drop off their children, who would then come through the access ramp, which is what, underneath the post office?
If you want to show it on there now.
You can take the mic. You can take the mic.
There you go. It's all yours.
Chairman Ringwald, members of the board, good evening, staff members. Thank you. Bob Stanzig, all architect for the project. Thank you. Yeah, the rear entrance that Kathy was referring to, and I'm going to provide a more detailed plan, obviously, but how the access actually takes place, but there are two curb cuts in Columbus Avenue here, so the cars can turn around. So this would be either of these, probably closer to the entrance. This is where a person or a parent would drop off their student. Here, there's stairs that go into this rear entrance, and then they would leave. From this rear entrance, there's a common hallway that either goes into the post office or has a set of stairs. So the access to the front space will be via the stairs through the basement, which is finished, and up into the, up into the studio, the school space directly. So now, the other option is they could just drop, and they could walk around to Main Street in the front entrance without going downstairs and up as well. The tenant has mentioned to us that they're going to have at least two people monitoring at this point, so they'll be receiving the students coming in to direct where they're going. Obviously, the classes are timed, so they know when they're going to get there. But again, this is the floor plan. I'm sure you've seen it. This is going to be reception area in front, and this back area is probably going to split into two spaces that have been alluded to for the dance lessons in the rear. We have to provide, considering occupancy, two new accessible bathrooms in the space as well. Just a thought about those parking spaces. It might be possible that there's actually cones in front of them, if they're going to be employee spaces, that the employee takes the cone, pulls the car, and puts it back out again when they leave, or a chain of some sort that might be able to secure them as well. So it's just used for the employees with some sort of tag on the chain that says for employee use only by 3135 Main Street.
All right, that's less of a concern to me. It's good, though. Thank you. More of a concern is if you have, if I, how many people will you have at any given time? How many students at any given time, roughly?
I'm going to have Lisa come up, the tenant, if you don't mind. Lisa?
There's 10, 10 to 12.
So 10 to 12 people could be pulling in to drop somebody off at?
At any one given time?
3:00 in the afternoon?
They'll be alternating, so Studio 1 would have 3:00. Then Studio 2 would be 3:15, Studio 3 would be 3:30, 3:45, so they're alternating.
There's three studios? Okay. All right. So you would, if there's 15 total, you'd maybe have five at each time?
Right, right.
That makes a lot more sense now. Thank you.
I thought they go at once. Boom.
You're not going to get 15 calls.
But good, but not that good.
That would be mayhem. All right. Thank you. You want to continue, Bob?
I do. You have any other questions?
Yeah, I do. You mentioned noise. Will the studios be soundproofed, or?
Yes.
Okay.
They will be framed up to the roof and soundproofed, insulated material, and we have the tracks on one side, the post office on the other, so we're probably not really disturbing any adjoining tenants, but again, it will be soundproofed and fire-rated as well.
And you mentioned two bathrooms.
Correct, yes.
Good. Questions?
There's just, well, those, I guess, those three spaces, you just make sure you have something in writing, again, next time, two? Yeah, for the three.
No, he's saying for the merchant.
For the merchant. For the lot.
I think Rowland.
The two, that.
Yeah.
Right. Yeah, I think Kathy's going to blow up on that and make sure we can secure the spaces.
Yeah. Okay.
No.
Yeah, other than that, you already spoke about how to get in from the back.
Is it going to be, is the variance from 19 to 6 or 5? Do we know yet?
It's up to us.
Or, I mean, I think it's up to the employees, like how many employees are going to be there? Is that correct?
Yeah.
I think they need access of the employees, because if you have 17 and 18-year-olds. Especially with, well, especially with Saturday.
Yeah, Saturday, Saturday through me.
The most.
We're leaning towards 6.
Yeah.
So we need an additional four.
Is that a deal breaker?
No.
Well, I mean, as I said before, why don't you, we're saying, that I think, informally, we're saying, see if you can get the additional four, and if there is an issue, I mean, we'll talk, exactly. But I just think, especially with, I think, also, we didn't think about Saturday and the fact that the post office, you will be having classes during a time where a lot of people go to the post office, so that is why I think we're leaning towards 6, four additional, excuse me, four additional spaces.
Yeah, I think we're going to try to pursue that, but I also think that with respect to Saturdays, at least there's more spaces available at the train station on a Saturday morning across the street than there is.
That's true. That's a good point, actually, because they commuter, that's a fair point.
Right.
Most of my teachers, they all come from the city, because they're Broadway performers, so they don't even own a car, so they're going to take the Metro North, get their Starbucks, then go across the way to teach. The only people using the parking spots would be myself and the secretary, but it's always good to have extra, so I would love.
Yeah, well, we don't want to burden anyone necessarily, so I'd also like to hear from the planning board what their thoughts are. But you have a good field, right? I mean, it's not going to be less than 5, it's not going to be more than 6. How about that?
And just one more question on anticipating the amount of spots you'll need at any given time. Do you have like a certain time of day that you anticipate having more of like your 17 and 18-year-old students? I think that might be another source.
The nighttime, definitely. My babies are between the 5:00 and 6:00, because I wait for the parents to get home, so they can be with their children and watch them in class. And then usually, my company members, which are the kids who live with me, who are there all day, they even assist with the younger kids, they'll be there probably with me from like 5:00 to 9:00, whether taking class or assisting.
So when the post office is closed, and then are they going to be there on Saturdays, too?
They'll be my assistants, so they would be like the runners, so if there is that drop-off, they'll be the one while the teacher's in the classroom getting ready. My runners will be my assistant teachers that will come in and greet the parents and bring the kids to their studio.
Okay. And do you have a sense of like how many you might have that might be of driving age at any given time?
Usually, I mean, that would be the later part of the night. I would say maybe the 7:00, but even that, they might just have their permit, so I think there's a rule on that, that they can't drive without their parent. I'm not positive on that.
Is it 17?
If it's 17, I think.
16, 17.
Yeah. It's been a long time since then.
It was, it was 16. It was 17.
Mr. Chairman, the biggest concern about the 5:00 hour is it's rush hour from the train station and also people getting out of work, but it's also the same rush hour for the two daycares that we have at that intersection. So just a suggestion, maybe we have our consultant, who is a traffic engineer, look at it and let us know whether or not he feels it would be safe enough for the children at that intersection and the additional traffic.
All right. Agreed. But that won't affect the parking. That's just traffic.
This is traffic.
Yeah, I think that is more planning.
So Gary, you're okay with that? We can get Noah involved?
It's up to the board.
I mean, I don't think for our purposes.
It's up to the board when I believe you need it.
Wouldn't it mostly be planning?
It's your call.
Yeah, I don't think it's for us.
All right, well, leave it for planning, then.
I don't think it's.
Okay.
All right. Any other questions?
No, not good.
I think it's a great proposal, and we're very happy to see you. I think it's a great proposal, and, you know, we're very happy to see you...
So much.
Put something there, yeah, that'll work, and yeah. But in the unknown, it's not your fault, is the daycare has not opened yet, so we don't know the full impact of the daycare. We're keeping our fingers crossed that we didn't, you know, get too lenient with them, but it'll be a trickle-down, you know. You got the post office, the daycare, and you guys all at once. And building inspector Bill Williams is right. You know, the 5 o'clock witching hour, it's going to be a little nutty.
Well, I'd love to work together with the daycare as well. I wanted to introduce myself. I don't know who the owner is, but a way that we could work together, too, that once the daycare hours, maybe they can come to the studio and vice versa. So that's something I'd love to...
Ah, there you go.
...do down the road, because we can help each other.
Alright. Okay, so you agreed to having some monitors there, and you already answered the questions on the noise, so I'm satisfied with that.
Yeah.
Anybody else?
No.
Alright, so you understand the process, right? We're going to open the public hearing now, and then hopefully, we'll be able to... Well, you're going to see the planning board as well, and then hopefully, our end, we'll be able to wrap this up at our next meeting in July. Alright? Alright, thank you. Okay, I'm going to make a motion to open the public hearing regarding 31-33 Main Street, special permit for a new dance studio. Is there anyone from the public that would like to comment?
No.
Nobody.
Nobody? Nobody on Zoom? Alright, I'll make a motion to leave the public hearing open until our next meeting. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any other business?
No.
I'll make a motion to close the meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Goodnight, Tuckahoe.
Night.